Hey everybody, this is Ben Bowman. Welcome back to another episode of The Oregon Bridge.
I think the big issue that is on a lot of people's minds related to decriminalization right now relates to public use. A couple of months ago, city council unanimously passed what's being called a trigger ban. It's pro recovery, I think, to create these environments where also continuing to talk about this openly has ripple effects that pay off and help people avail themselves to the resources they need to get help.
Folks, today we were very excited to talk to Tony Morse. Tony is a candidate for the new Portland City Council. He's running in District Four, which is most of the west side and a little bit of southeast Portland. And Tony is approaching his run in a very specific way. He's running as what he calls a recovery candidate. He is in recovery from drinking alcohol and hasn't had a drink. I think he's coming up on seven years. And he also works in his day job for Oregon Recovers, which is an advocacy group that does, that basically works to expand Oregon's ability to treat people struggling with addiction. Although I'll say, as Tony mentions in this episode, he speaks only for himself in this podcast and not for his employer. So it's a great episode. We'll talk a little bit about Tony's professional experience. He's done, he's an attorney, went to law school, worked at a big firm and then has sort of ventured into real estate and then into political advocacy. And now as a candidate, it's a very interesting story. And then we spend a lot of time talking about the big policy issues facing Portland and in particular, Measure 110, housing homelessness and how those things intersect. And Tony's got some novel ideas on how the city could, could address the addiction crisis that I think all of us see as being a huge problem. And then we talk a little bit about what kind of candidate he is, how he's talking about himself, what it's like running in this new sort of experimental form of government where, you know, it's multi-member districts and you know, there's these fundraising constraints, but also opportunities. So it's an interesting discussion. We, we touch on some hot topics that I think folks will find interesting. I will say before we jump into the interview, we will certainly not be able to interview every candidate for Portland City Council on this podcast. But we do want to talk to some folks and inform our listeners a little bit about what the conversation is looking like in Portland, how different candidates are approaching it. Tony was the, the first to reach out and ask to, to come on. And so we were happy to have him on. And I think he is a genuinely interesting candidate who's approaching this in a very specific way. We have, we're in conversations with some other candidates who are interested in coming on. We don't want to become too Portland City Council focused in a race where there's, I think we mentioned on the podcast, some people are saying there'll be at least 100 people running for all these city council seats. So we won't do 100 interviews, but we will do some more. If you or someone you know is running for Portland City Council and you think you would be a, an interesting interview on this podcast, feel free to reach out and we will do our best to accommodate. But with all that being said, thank you for listening to this podcast and enjoy this week's interview with Tony Morse.
Now that the legislative session is over, it's time for Oregon's activists, candidates and political committees to turn their attention to the 2024 elections. With government regulation of political activities becoming more complicated nearly every year, and with political actors increasingly initiating complaints and litigation to achieve political goals, having experienced legal counsel has become critical to success in the political arena. Harang Long PC has represented clients involved in candidate and ballot measure elections for decades. To learn more about Harang Long's political law practice, check out our website at harang.com. That's W W W dot H A R R A N G dot com.
All right, Tony Morse, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you, Ben. Really excited to be here and really appreciate the invitation.
Absolutely. We're excited to have you. So we'll, we'll talk about Portland City Council. We'll talk about the experience of running for office. But let's talk a little bit about how you arrived at, at this place in your career. You now work for Oregon Recovers as a lobbyist. We should make clear at the beginning that you are not speaking for Oregon Recovers today, correct?
Correct. Here on behalf of myself and my campaign for Portland City Council and not in my capacity as policy and advocacy director for Oregon Recovers.
So we, we just did an interview with Metro Councillor Christine Lewis. And she, like me, has been in the Oregon politics space, like since she started, since she graduated from Oregon politics. Your path is interesting and a little more non-conventional. Can you describe how you went from sort of law school to real estate to politics and policy and what that journey was like for you?
Sure, would love to. So just to kind of illustrate how different my path has been for a lot of folks who wind up working in politics in Oregon is. During the last election cycle, I worked as a field organizer for the Democratic Party of Oregon coordinated campaign. And most of my coworkers were nearly half my age. I'm 42 years old and a lot of my coworkers were in their early twenties and fresh out of college. I joke with folks, sometimes I was like the, the grisly old veteran. You've seen those World War II movies. It was definitely a different pathway for me than a lot of my teammates. But I am a lawyer by training. I went to college, I actually went to college with Oregon Speaker of the House, Dan Rayfield. We were classmates at Western Oregon University. I finished in 2003. And at the time, I wasn't entirely sure what I was supposed to be doing with myself. So I worked as a server, cook and bartender in brew pubs for a couple of years. And then over the course of that span of time, I figured out I wanted to be an attorney. I served on a jury and thought, this is really interesting. And this is the kind of work I could see myself doing. So I wound up moving to Boston in 2005. I attended New England School of Law, now known as New England Law, Boston. And finished in 2008, came back to Portland for a job with a law firm, Bolivian Hauser Bailey, which at the time was a much larger commercial litigation firm than it is now. They've contracted quite a bit since I departed in 2010. But as a commercial litigation associate, I was working on everything from serious personal injury, wrongful death, to a lot of work where I guess in a general way, you could say it was very wealthy individuals involved in high dollar disputes. And I would do everything from take depositions and interview witnesses to do long motions, a lot of research and writing. But anyway, to sprinkle in some-
Before you go there, so there's a lot, a lot of the like college age students, interns in the Capitol, people who work on campaigns, who are interested in politics, think about law school. They think they might want to go to law school. Then sometimes maybe not quite sure what they want to do with the law degree. What, what is your advice for those folks about whether or not to pursue a law degree and what it adds and the costs and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And I would say that's not a decision to be taken lightly. It is a substantial commitment in terms of time and cost. And for me, it was relocating across the country. I will say, as someone who now works in policy and political spaces, the experience and education I do find quite helpful. When you're reading legislation and you're trained to read it in a way that you acquire during your legal education, both in terms of analysis and speed. And one thing you really get good at in law school and practicing law is kind of taking apart complicated information, which is a lot of legislative work, right? And you can break it down into these units that are easier to kind of convey and explain to other stakeholders. It's-
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, it's, if, if you really are certain you want to work in policy, I don't think it's essential. When I went to law school, it wasn't because I wanted to get into politics or policies because I thought I wanted to be a trial lawyer for my entire career.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. So you come back, you get the job that you thought you wanted. Was it what you expected, what you hoped? Did it not meet your expectations? Why the transition out of the field?
Sure, you know, the billable hour model, let's, let's start there. We all are taught about the billable hour model in law school. And for those not familiar, any of your listeners who might be considering legal careers, your time throughout the entire day is tracked to the 10th of an hour. So that means every six minutes you are writing a billing entry. So phone call with Ben, point, you know, six minutes, email Ben, 12 minutes. And that is a, it can be kind of a grind, to put it plainly. There are other days where your billing entries are not as complicated. Maybe you're at a deposition or a hearing and it's four hours here, three hours for remediation session, et cetera. But it was a demanding lifestyle and that was what I expected. But the wrinkle, I think for me was that I started working in 2008, right when the financial crash was happening. And ordinarily, in a law firm setting, there's no shortage of work. But my class of big firm graduates in 2008, and this was across the country. We were really, I think, short of work for new lawyers to do. And there was across the country, big layoffs, folks who thought that they had big firm gigs lined up, had to go on and find other things to do. I survived that ordeal, but it was certainly a complicating factor when you're trying to figure out how to practice law, establish relationships with partners who are supposed to be feeding you work. And just that kind of uncertainty, you're wondering what's going to happen. You know, is, is another financial firm going to collapse? And is that going to send shockwaves throughout our industry? But you know, where, where I went, going back to your question, my path out of law is actually more, more personal. It's not industry specific. So I met someone to whom I am now married. And she was entering her fourth year of medical school at OHSU here in Portland. And right about the time we figured out, hey, this is like a serious thing. She was coming up on when fourth year medical students find out where they're going to match for residency. And her plan, of course, and preference was to stay at OHSU. But lo and behold, she matched at the University of Utah. And we decided together that we wanted to stay geographically proximate or together, I guess. And I made the decision to resign from the firm and I followed her to Salt Lake. We were, we were there for about a year and her preference was always to be at OHSU. And towards the end of that 12 month period, a position in her specialty psychiatry opened up at OHSU. And she was able to lateral in. I came back and at that time, the legal market in Portland was not great. And the firm I had left was going through a transitionary period, I guess you could say. It's a much smaller firm today than it was when I started. Going back there was not going to be an option. So ultimately I wound up as a judicial law clerk because that was something I had never got to experience before. And I thought, what a great way to do something I, I didn't do because I was so focused on getting into a big firm. And it would be this great opportunity to platform back into practice when I was ready.
And so the, the, you were clerking, just from, from reading your LinkedIn, you were clerking for two different judges? And the work was in adjacent to or involved with drug courts? Is that right?
Yeah. So the first judge I was hired by, Judge Eric Block, was the judge for the STARS Court Program. And START is an acronym. It stands for Success Through Accountability Restitution and Treatment. And it is a intensive probationary court. So the participants in START Court are folks who have been convicted of property crimes. And that can be anything from identity theft to burglary, unauthorized use of a vehicle. And the one thing they all have in common is that substance use disorder or addiction is a common denominator. It's folks who struggle with addiction and wind up engaging in property crimes to finance day-to-day life and their addiction. So the idea is that we get folks in this court and they have access to a broad range of resources, including treatment. So they get to work with a counselor. They have a probation officer who has a specialized caseload, who is very closely involved with them meeting all the requirements of their probation. So that they attend treatment, they remain substance free, they remain engaged in community service. And it is a great opportunity to provide to folks who might otherwise have to do some custody time to get the tools they need to better manage living with addiction and become productive members of society. And I got to see a lot of successes up close and personal.
So you, you write about this on your website. You're pretty open about being a recovery candidate. At what point, at what point in your personal journey is this experience as a law clerk? Like, are you already in recovery at that point or you're, or you're not yet?
I'm not yet. You know, that was something that happened for me a few years later that actually dovetailed with the 2016 election. So-
Oh, really?
Yeah. My story with politics and recovery really kind of intersects in a way that I think makes me feel like I've come full circle since when I started on this journey.
Do you mind telling the story?
No, not at all. I mean, just so, and we've, we've chatted generally about this before. I am someone in long-term recovery. For me personally, that means I've, I've not had a drink since January of 2017. So right after the election and I'm coming up on my seven-year recovery birthday. Very excited.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And that, you know, I was, I was struggling right around late 2016. And I think the impact for me, one impact of the 2016 election was that I started to struggle more. I was like a lot of people, not happy with how the presidential election went that year and struggled to understand how that happens. But to be clear, I think that where I was heading personally, I was going to get to a point where I needed to ask for help anyway. It's, I think it's maybe possible that that election outcome hastens that process along a little bit. But you know, sometimes folks will talk about reaching bottom. I know that's not everybody's favorite language. But one way I do like to talk about it is reaching a point where I asked for help and did what was suggested. And when I reached that point, I really made a pivot about how I wanted to live and was intentional about approaching every aspect of my life. And that meant a recovery program that for me personally is abstinence based. I am abstinent because it works for me. And as, you know, to the points I was making about how there's intersection between recovery and politics, the more I was able to kind of get myself reset, I guess you could say. I spent more time reflecting on how, how can I be of service to others? The, the approach to recovery I was in really emphasized service. And there's this remark I heard Pete Buttigieg make once that, that really still resonates with me is, and I believe in making myself useful. And being in recovery, a big part of that for me is finding ways to do that. Friends, family and my community. And ultimately Commissioner, Labor Commissioner Christina Stevenson is someone I know since my law clerk days.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she was judicial law clerk for Judge Littenberger and our courtrooms were right around the corner. And we would chat in between court sessions and became friends. And in 2019, she decided to run for the Democratic nomination for House District 33. And I think like a lot of folks, up until that point, politics felt almost inaccessible to me. Like it's something that I paid a lot of attention to, but I didn't know a lot of people necessarily involved. And I think I was one of those folks that was like, well, how does one even get involved in the political process? So for me, this personal connection made it really easy to reach out and go have coffee with her and say, this is amazing. I, I know what a great person you are and how smart you are. I want to help. So that kind of put me on this path to managing her social media, writing, crafting written content. And I, the more I did it, the more it got me kind of hooked. And fast forward a few years later, I wound up as a paid campaign staffer for the DPO. So started very much just a volunteer who couldn't stay away and it turned into paid work.
That's awesome. That's a great story. And the difference between you and many campaign volunteers is you didn't start by saying, I want to help you, but I don't want to do any door knocking or phone calling, which is usually where it starts. Okay. So you, you work on Christina's primary campaign. I think you work on a couple additional campaigns. You become a paid field director. You then get hired as a lobbyist for Oregon Recovers. When do you decide you're going to run yourself and sort of flip the script and become a candidate rather than just a campaign staffer or volunteer? And why did you make that decision?
Sure. And I think the more I have done this work, I kind of imagine it as like an arc. I, you know, volunteer, increasingly more involved volunteer roles, paid campaign work. And getting to work in the process of helping people that you really believe in get elected. And then, you know, Tina Kotex's election, it was this really intense effort. It was a very close election. And getting to be a part of that and then be in Salem last session and lobbying on policy areas that she campaigned on. Behavioral health is a big priority for her. It's, you, you start to see the connection between knocking that door, getting someone elected and then being more involved in the policy aspect. And I think for me personally, I am seeing the next component of this arc personally is to go from policy influencer to policymaker. And I think that those of us who do this work and feel personally connected are just always looking for additional opportunities to advance causes that we care a lot about. And with regard to Portland and this race for Portland City Council, Portland, I think most would agree with the statement that the city is experiencing an addiction crisis. When I talk about it with folks, my perspective is that it's influencing every part of daily life from homelessness and public safety to community livability and reputation of our city. And we are going to have this new form of government in Portland with a council of 12. And I think it's essential really that somebody with some lived experience around addiction and recovery and also some policy expertise and experience around the legislative process has a seat in the room where decisions are being made. And especially with this new form of government in Portland's, our hybrid model now, the commissioners are legislators and they run bureaus. But under this new system that we're going to see go into effect in January of 25, it's going to be a strictly legislative model. So we really need folks who understand how policy moves through the legislative process, can build coalitions to advance the policy that needs to get passed and, and stop the policy that we'd be better off without.
So let's, we'll talk in a second about some of the big ticket items that the city of Portland is wrestling with and the state is wrestling with. But first, which district are you running in? And can you describe for listeners what section of Portland you'll be running in?
Sure. So I am running for Portland City Council District Four. And the geography in my district is the entire west side. And in that regard, District Four is the only district that includes the west side and a component of the east side. It also includes Eastmoreland, Wasmoreland, Selwood, Reed and a sliver of the Woodstock neighborhood where my family and I live.
These are very large districts, a lot of voters in those districts. Okay. So let's start with, I mean, you're, you're, you describe yourself as a, as a recovery candidate. And you discuss the addiction crisis pretty prominently in your materials. Let's start with 110. Obviously the city is going to be operating within the state's legal framework. Measure 110 is expected to be a hot topic in the short session. Obviously the city doesn't have a direct role necessarily on what, where the state lands or voters land on a ballot measure related to Measure 110. But what are your personal thoughts on Measure 110 as someone who hopes to serve at the local government level?
Sure. That's, that's a great question. And 110, I think is on everybody's minds right now. So I think it's important to unpack 110 a little bit and make sure that folks understand exactly what it did and how it operates. And there are two primary components. There's the decriminalization piece. And as a practical matter, what that means is 110 decriminalized certain quantities of certain types of drugs. And there is also the funding component that is, in my experience, not discussed as much as the decriminalization piece. And in that regard, 110 reallocated to a significant degree how cannabis tax revenue is spent in Oregon. So some, but not all, but to a prominent extent of cannabis tax revenue in Oregon now, now goes into the Measure 110 account and pays for things like peer mentor services, sober housing. There are some harm reduction services, of course, is a hot topic. And that money has, I would argue, made really important strides in this crisis. Especially with, when we talk about peer mentors, folks who are struggling respond well. And I'm speaking from experience here, to folks who have walked in their shoes and understand what they're struggling with. And some of that money goes to organizations that specialize in outreach with peers and help folks navigate addiction and get into recovery and maintain recovery. So to that extent, I think the funding component is something that ought to be protected. And I think when you look at polling, there's, the public sentiment is supportive of that as well. But on a related note, I think it's also important to point out that cannabis money can pay for some things, but not all things. And that is because while cannabis is legal at the state level, it remains illegal at the federal level. So as a practical matter, that means we can't do Medicaid- So um as a practical matter, that means we can't do Medicaid matching with cannabis money. So, for example, if somebody's on O H P and they need what we might describe as clinical treatments. Um, they're gonna be ineligible to um receive major one-ten funding for those treatment services. Um, but um the other side of that coin is major one-ten pays for all these important services. Um, like peers, sober housing, um that Medicaid can't. Now, back to decriminalization, um, I think. The big issue that is on a lot of people's minds related to decriminalization right now relates to public use. And um we see it in District Four, we see it downtown, it is um all too common unfortunately. For um folks to see um open air fentanyl use. Um, earlier this year, I was uh out with my second grade uh son. And we were uh taking a trip to Powell's Books and on our way back to the car, we. Saw uh someone with a uh square of um. Tinfoil or um aluminum foil and they were either about to um. Uh, use the foil or they had just finished and it's, it's concerning and it's, it's scary when you. Walk up on something like that and um I, I think that. Folks very reasonably in Portland wants public use under control. And to the extent there's interplay between what is happening at the city level and what major one-ten. Has um. Caused a lot of discussion about with regard to public use is that. A couple months ago, city council unanimously passed that um what's being called a trigger ban. Um, for public use and some context around that is. There's current state law that prohibits local jurisdictions from regulating public drug use. So this resolution passed by Portland City Council says that. If and when that law is modified, we are going to enact a public use ban. And they went one step beyond that and um passed a resolution directing their Office of Government Relations. To start lobbying the legislature to amend. That law um in such a way so that they can see that um public use span going into effect. Um.
Let, let me, let me ask you this, so. A lot of the solutions for Oregon's addiction crisis will necessarily need to come from the state level. Um, there's also a role to play, I think, a, a large role for the counties to play and particularly Multnomah County. Um, we talked to Christine Lewis about the homelessness services um bond, which some of those expenditures I think are related to this. What is the city's job here and what does a recovery candidate at the city level specifically mean? Like, what do you want to do? What do you think the city needs to do that it isn't doing to address this crisis?
That's, that's a great question and um I would start by saying that. Addiction um knows no jurisdictional boundaries. I mean, it, it's um. It's so significant, I believe, that nobody in Portland is, has been untouched by the addiction crisis in some way. Um, either it's a uh something they've experienced personally. Or they have a friend, a family member, or um they work downtown and it's, it's very visible to them. Um, but um in terms of the role that different layers of government play. Um, there is, I think, some important asymmetry and needs between the city and the county. Um, the city, we have first responders, police, Portland Street Response, Portland Fire. Who are quite often the ones interacting primarily and most frequently. With folks who are very acutely ill and struggling. Um, whereas the county, that is where so much of our local behavioral health money. And resources um are cited, so. In that regard, I think we have currently this kind of fragmented and siloed approach. Where everyone is doing um what they can, but they're not necessarily coordinating with one another. It's left hand, right hand. So to me, it makes sense to create a coordinated Office of Addiction response and have. Players from both the city and the county working under the same roof. So their efforts are coordinated and consolidated and there's not um. A competition or a lack of communication in how this response is executed. So that, I think, um creates an opportunity to identify different funding buckets. And um, you know, to the extent federal dollars are available, county dollars. And ultimately, um, I envision an office like this being run by. A chief recovery officer whose primary mission is really to focus on addiction. Because like I said, um, there's so much interplay between this issue and all. Um, the other challenges that um our communities are dealing with right now.
Um, that's interesting because I'm thinking of the Joint Office of Homelessness Services as a sort of like. Um, similar structure uh between the city of Portland and Multnomah County. Obviously had some of its own set of problems that I think they're navigating. But how do you avoid recreating silos, right? Because. So there's, there is an interplay between the addiction crisis and the homelessness crisis. But there's a lot of people who are struggling with addiction who live in a home. Um, and. And so like, I, how do you, how do you, how would you think about how it would operate and how it would interplay with like the homelessness and housing? Um, crisis, crises that are maybe adjacent to the addiction or crisis?
Right, so um, to the extent that there is overlap between homelessness and addiction, one thing I talk a lot about. Is the need for recovery housing and. Recovery housing, um, for your listeners who are um not, not quite sure what that means in the context of uh housing services. Um, when I talk about recovery housing, I'm talking about sober living spaces and. Um, there is data out there that makes clear that folks who struggle with addiction. Who spend time in some sober living um arrangements. Have a much greater success rate for staying in recovery over longer periods of time.
Hmm.
Um, it is, I think, a really great tool um to focus on right now for a few reasons. Number one, um, you see this stat a lot. I'm sure it's something you're familiar with. Um, Oregon. Um, unacceptably ranks fiftieth in access to treatments and. Meanwhile, um, we rank second in percentage of our residents who have a substance use disorder. So there's a huge deficit there. We need to focus on how to bridge. And when folks need um residential care, um residential treatment. We unfortunately currently lack the amount of inpatient treatment beds that we need, so recovery housing. Um, sober living, I think, is this building block where we can craft a viable um substitute. By pairing it with outpatient treatment. So um a lot of folks, when they. Come to the point in their journey, they really do early on need a sober living environment. Where they're not going to be around people drinking or openly using drugs. And that is why this inpatient treatment model, um, folks go and live in like a dorm and they attend treatment. Receive the services they need, but when those beds aren't available, we can get folks into recovery housing beds. And have them participate in outpatient treatments. Um. It's um significantly cheaper. Um, inpatient treatment um can run. Twenty, twenty thousand dollars for a, a thirty month, or I'm sorry, thirty day, one month um program. And out, right, and comparatively outpatient treatment, um, we can get folks engaged for. Um, sixty, ninety days, I mean, depending on who the provider is, for around five thousand dollars, give or take. And then um recovery housing beds um are available um in Multnomah County. Anywhere from five hundred and twenty dollars-ish ballpark to seven hundred and. Twenty-five dollars-ish and that rate changes. Um, but you can check it out on. MacBoe has a website for um what recovery housing is, is going for. So it's, it's a cost-effective way to address this deficit that we have in terms of treatment beds. Um, so um, otherwise, I, I see the city um. Taking a leadership role. I actually um. Was happy to see this public use spam um proposal. I, I think that. Um, when we have an environment where folks are openly using drugs. Um, it's triggering for folks to walk through downtown and seeing folks um. Using drugs, especially if they're early on in their recovery or sobriety. Um, speaking personally, there's a reason early on I stayed away from large groups of people where. Um, most, if not everyone, was drinking. Um, I stayed away from bars. Um. It's, it's pro-recovery, I think, to create these environments where. Folks are gonna be less triggered. Um, and also. Just continuing to talk about this openly in a de-stigmatizing way. Um, has ripple effects um that pay off and help people um. Available themselves to the resources they need to get healthy and. That means talking about addiction and uh maybe not uh using terminology like substance abuse. I mean, the word abuse can mean different way, different things to different people, right? So um, I think just creating this culture of uh being a pro-recovery city. Um, is gonna help remove stigma and help people um. Get that step closer um to where they want to go or, or need to go, rather.
One final question on this before we transition, um. There, you mentioned harm reduction. This is a very, uh, one of the more controversial um components of measure one-ten. Um, and there's these conversations, I think, adjacent to uh public consumption ban. About safe use sites. Do you have thoughts? And I think my, I have no idea, but my guess is like this. Local jurisdictions or counties would likely be in charge of. Authorizing or establishing these if they're going to be permitted. Do you have thoughts on like broad thoughts on this harm reduction and then specifically the sort of public use sites?
Sure, I, I do. Um, so for starters, I would say. Harm reduction is a tool, it's not an outcome. Um, and when we talk about harm reduction, what we're talking about is making you safer. And if folks who are struggling with addiction are going to use drugs, we of course want it to be as safe as possible. Um, we don't want people who are ill and that's what addiction is. It's a chronic, long-term illness. We don't want them harming themselves.
Hmm.
Uh, but too much emphasis on harm reduction, I think. At least in the way we talk about the crisis, um, has reduced the amount of space um for talking about the need to reduce. Use, right? Um, we want folks to use drugs less. And the community has a reasonable interest in policy that serves that goal. Um, the Lund Report had an article, I think, in July comparing the amount of nine-one-one overdose calls. Um, for the months of May and June this year to the months of May and June in the year prior. And those calls have doubled and when we first responders who are spending so much of their time. And resources um responding to overdoses, which they need to, these are life-threatening emergencies. Um, but it takes away bandwidth um and their ability to do other things. Um. Uh, heart attack calls, car accidents, um, property crimes, um. When we talk about the addiction crisis, um, and the way I want folks to think about it is. It strains all of our systems and so we do better as a community if we. As a whole, in all kinds of different areas, if we get it um under control. Um. Harm reduction is a life-saving tool and it does play a role in addressing the addiction crisis. Um, needle exchange programs save lives, they prevent the spread of hepatitis C and HIV. Um, to the extent that um. We are going to engage in outreach um with harm reduction. Um, services being the reason for that outreach, um contacting folks um with, with drug supplies. To the extent that's going on, those interactions also, in my opinion, need to be used as an opportunity. To do some outreach for encouraging folks to get into recovery. Every encounter is an opportunity to have a conversation with someone and say. Have you thought about trying to get sober? Um, do you want to try something different? Um, do you know where to go if you? Um, need to detox and you're concerned about being able to do it safely. Um, I am not someone who thinks. Um. You hand out um drug supplies and, and the conversation is over. Because recovery, while it is about meeting people where they're at, it's also about not leaving people there. And just as when I was shown some different um approaches and tools for how I. Might want to live differently that has um really benefited me. I think we really need to be um doing that with uh these types of encounters as well.
Hmm, what about these, the, the, the safe use sites idea? The argument that you hear is like. If you ban public consumption, um. You're basically, what people will say is you're criminalizing homelessness because these folks are homeless. They don't have their own property. Um, and they're addicted uh to drugs. Um, and so if you say that you can't consume it publicly. You're basically saying if you're wealthy, you can do it on your, in your own property, but you can't if you're homeless. So therefore, we should have these sort of public, publicly owned or operated, I guess. I don't exactly know how it would work. Um, but safe use sites where people could, could use safely um as a sort of, I think, harm reduction. Um, mechanism.
Right.
How, how do you think about that?
Well, I think um, one thing that, that is really important to be mindful of is that. And you hear this in behavioral health spaces, these drugs are different. I mean, what we're really struggling with right now is this new meth that is um putting folks into. Um, episodes of psychosis and then also fentanyl. And fentanyl um is about fifty to a hundred times more potent than morphine is. You can put a lethal, you can fit a lethal dose of fentanyl on the tip of a pencil. Um, how fentanyl is typically consumed, um. Um, and what we see in Portland is that it's, it's smoked. It's um often put on to a square foil. It's heated from underneath and inhaled through some kind of a straw. So this, this model of safe consumption sites, um. I think when folks think about them, um, they're thinking more about safe injection sites, right? So when you have um large groups of people smoking um a very um potent and lethal. Drug, um, that's gonna be difficult to manage from like a uh. Administration and uh supervised um point of view from uh the folks who are gonna be tasked with working there. How, how do you create a safe working environment for um folks who are gonna be um. In or around um secondhand fentanyl smoke. Um, you know, I, I think that. There, there is a discussion to be had about the role that a public use ban. Might impact um how folks use when they're in public and. One criticism I hear is that it, it puts folks into hiding, but I, I think.
Hmm.
The way to address that is to change the way we do outreach and. Um, again, this is a role for, for peers and where they can really be um. Um, doing key work and it's uh being able to do effective outreach. Um, in a way that meets folks where, where they're at and again, um. If they're not visibly out in public, um, that doesn't mean we can't develop strategies for engaging them. Um, so I, I think that it's, it's not an easy issue then, and I'll be straight with you, but um. Public use, um, I, I think has, has reached a point for our community. Um, where we have to get real about it. Um, and it is impacting um. Public safety. Um, folks um are comfortable. Folks are comfortable going downtown because they're not comfortable with going down the streets and being adjacent to secondhand fentanyl smoke. So it's, it's about.
I think that's, I think that's right. I've, when I've been thinking about this, it's like people, one question is like, does this policy choice help address the addiction crisis? And then other questions, which are related but different are, does this address the reputational problem Portland has? Does this address the economic challenges that downtown businesses are facing? Does it like, like, there's a lot of challenges that are related and not every policy mechanism is going to address all of them, but they all need to be attended to in some way.
I agree. And the, this dialogue around the addiction crisis so often turns into these opposing viewpoints where you have folks on one end of the spectrum saying, the addiction crisis is strictly a public health crisis. It's, it's, it shouldn't be treated as a public safety issue. And their counterpart on the other end of the spectrum talks about this being a public safety emergency. And I am someone who believes quite resolutely that the addiction crisis is both. It's a public health and a public safety crisis. And we have to strike this balance between different role players and their responsibility and how we respond. We are not going to arrest our way out of this crisis, certainly not. But on the other hand, I don't think we can say to ourselves, there is no public safety component to things like open drug use and open drug dealing. We have to get real about the role that each space plays in addressing this emergency.
Well, thank you for the deep dive on a really challenging policy topic. I think that was, that was useful for me and I hope for listeners too. Before we break, I want to ask you a couple more sort of like broader questions about running. I asked Eric Zimmerman a version of this where it's basically like, what kind of leadership does Portland need? Since you're running, my version of that question is like, what leadership style will you bring to the table? And for framing, like, there's going to be a ton of candidates running. And some are going to be super ideological, some are going to be aligning themselves like I'm a business interest candidate. Some are going to, you know, like, there's a million ways to frame yourself as a candidate. Some will be collaborators and trying to build bridges. Like, what skillset and leadership style are you going to bring to the table and offer to voters as like, this is the type of counselor I'll be?
That's, that's a great question. So I don't know if you ever read Josh Barrow, but he talks about sometimes, he's a pundit and very much a centrist. And he talks about the differing approaches of two Democratic presidents, President Obama and President Biden. And President Obama would release his priorities, Republicans in Congress would release theirs. And then President Obama would take to the airwaves and make a case as to why Republicans ought to change their priorities. And what we have seen with the Biden White House is they released their priorities. Republican, his Republican counterparts in Congress released theirs. And the approach of President Obama has to been, or I'm sorry, President Biden, excuse me, to look for the overlap. And that is where I think government can really deliver the best results and outcomes for the public who has elected them to serve. I describe myself as center-left and I have a center-right friend. And there is a lot of stuff we have disagreements about. But we are both very much invested in fixing Oregon's addiction crisis. And we are able to compartmentalize those disagreements and really focus and align our efforts on the things we do agree on. And I think when we are talking about a city council of 12, we are going to need folks who are able to do just that, who are going to be able to focus on these areas of agreements and move the ball forward, to use a football analogy, and pick up first downs as we solve problems. I think what Portlanders and really American voters as a whole are frustrated with right now is this, the opposite, where those elected to serve are focusing on the differences. And we wind up in ideological or dogmatic shouting matches and then nothing gets done. So in that regard, I, like I mentioned, worked as a field organizer for the Democratic Party of Oregon. Proud Democrat, proud of the work I did to elect Governor Kotak and Commissioner Stevenson. I was out knocking on doors, talking about reproductive rights in the cold, freezing rain till my hands were purple. I am very pro labor. I've already been endorsed by a number of labor organizations. So that's where I am in terms of ideology, but as a practical matter. And maybe this has to do with almost a decade in real estate. And also as an attorney, it's finding the areas of alignment with folks that you may not necessarily agree with and, and putting those into play and solving problems. So.
I, I really liked the framing there and I like how much you've thought about it. I was just talking to someone a couple of days ago where they're like, everyone can agree that the previous form of government in the city of Portland was not working. The open question right now is whether this form of government will work or at least get us a little closer to functional and ability to solve problems. And I, I agree that there's going to have to be a tipping point of counselors with that kind of mindset where nobody's going to get everything they want. Nobody's going to get everything that some of the major stakeholders who supported them wanted. But can you make something functional out of, you know, I guess, what do you need? Seven, seven votes will be the new majority?
Yes, yes. That's, that's where I was going next is this new form of government is all about counting to seven. And a council of 12, seven votes carries the day in terms of passing policy. And the mayor lacks a veto power, lacks veto power under this new form of government and casts a vote only in event of a tie. So really it is crucial to develop, or I'm sorry, elect folks who can, like I said, find areas of agreement and count votes, get to seven.
Yeah. So last question in our last couple of minutes here. And don't give away your, you know, deep, top secret campaign playbook here. But how do you, how do you campaign for this office? You've got a bajillion other people running. I say exactly, like, I think there's over 10 people running or there certainly will be. Someone said they expected over 100 total city council candidates when all is said and done, which strikes me as plausible and also like mind boggling. So you've, so you've got a ton of people you're running against. You're in a gigantic district where I imagine, there's got to be, what, a couple hundred thousand people or something like that? And it's not like vote for me only, it's like you're going to vote for up to three people and like, maybe I'm not your first choice, but I'd love for you to like, tell us about the experience of campaigning in this new experiment in democracy that Portland is, is taking us down.
It's, it's interesting for someone who has worked on and around several campaigns, but has never been a candidate before to now take the role of candidate. And a lot of it is doing outreach and having conversations from folks at organizations who are interested in policy to your friends and neighbors. What are you thinking about? What's important to you? I think this far out from an election, because there is no primary in this race, we are going to have a single election for council in November. Right now, it is as much about listening to folks as it is about everything else. So it's, it's a lot of getting different perspectives on, on what folks are most concerned with. And folks are, are not necessarily even thinking about city council right, right now. We're going to have our primary in Oregon in May and there's going to be some significant races there. And we have a district attorney's race, we have some congressional seats. And we have a presidential election that of course, a lot of people are thinking a lot about. So right now, it's a lot of outreach, conversations, listening, fundraising calls.
Boo, the worst part.
So for, for your listeners who are not familiar with the city of Portland's small donor election program, there is this opportunity for candidates who participate to receive public financing funds. If someone as a candidate receives donations from 250 Portlanders, at least, the city will match $20 contributions or up to $20 at a rate of nine to one. So a $20 donation turns into a $200 donation. So the, the idea is it encourages folks who might not otherwise feel like their donation would be impactful to participate in the process. And trust me, when you tell somebody your $20 donation turns into $200, people are really excited about it.
I was just going to say, that actually sounds like a much more fun fundraising call than the kind that other people running for office have to make.
Right. It's, it's certainly an upsell. And it also is, I think, a great way of keeping big money out of local politics. If you participate in this program as a candidate, you are limited to, the size of donation you can take is capped at $350 per donor. So you know, the joke among candidates and people who work in politics is most of politics are running for office, most of running for office is asking for endorsements and asking for money. So that's a lot of what it's been like so far, to answer your question. And I think to the extent we're going to have a lot of candidates, I'm in this early to start talking about things that I know Portlanders are, are really thinking a lot about right now. So in that regard, I am, am trying to have these conversations early and often. So as the ballot gets more crowded, I have done the work to start this dialogue about what we can do better as a city in terms of managing our addiction crisis.
Awesome. Well, Tony, thank you for coming on the podcast. If folks want to learn more about your campaign or get in touch with you, where should they go?
Yeah, I've got a, a new campaign website and it's And you can check out why I'm running, learn more about me, see my early endorsements. And there's opportunities to get involved and support the campaign. So tonyforportland.com, please check it out.
Awesome. Tony, thanks for coming on. It was great talking to you.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks for having me.